September 22nd, 2020, I would take a motion to open the meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa, second by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Moment of silence. Thank you. On behalf of myself and the school committee members, I would like to thank EB Cam as always for streaming this meeting live tonight. Thank you so much, and we will start tonight with the superintendent's corner.
Thank you. Welcome back. It's good to be back. It's nice to see students' faces. It's nice to have a little hustle and bustle around the campuses. Central School and the junior senior high school. It is really nice to see the buses in and out and the vans and the kids. And this week, the anxiousness and the angst of us waiting for our brand new learners, our pre-K. Dr. Williams and I got to see our brand new three and a half year olds and four year olds in pre-K class yesterday doing mindfulness, breathing in, holding their breath, and blowing out the candles. And that's, it's important to us to see the beginning of learning and learning, playing to learn and being able to be social. I was in kindergarten yesterday and today. They got off the bus. They were, they're a different bunch of kids this year. And I want to thank the parents and grandparents and everybody that has been really working with this age group during COVID and being home and being less social. I can tell you that the kids that we're seeing in kindergarten are more social than I have seen in years past. I was in, I think, three or four of the kindergarten rooms today. I asked questions. I said, how many of you took naps yesterday? You know, nobody took a nap. They loved it. They didn't want to, some kids didn't want to leave at the half day yesterday. We wish that we could have them full day right now. They're getting on the bus. They're getting off the bus. They're listening well. They're really, their socialness is just progression, progressing probably better than anything else because of the limited exposure that they have had. And so they're so excited to see other children that are their height, that have the same size head, that have little fingers, and that look like them. And if you, if you know anything about early childhood, which I have learned over the years, is they don't see color. They don't see different ethnicity. They don't see differences between them. They see another person that's like them, that talks like them, that understands like them. And it was, I saw boys with short hair, boys with long hair, girls with short hair, girls with long hair, girls with dresses and pink dresses, and boys with high top sneakers. And then I saw some, some boys with cowboy boots on today. And so we were expressing ourselves as we did for the last six months at home and being able to play to learn. And it's a pleasure to see our new learners get to campus. And yesterday, watching pre-K, I think we saw, was it Monday, we saw more parents, and I think every year we see this, they're more nervous and anxious and crying more than the kids were. This year, these kids were like, I want that building. Get me inside. They were ready to come in. Not that they don't love their moms and dads. I think maybe they said, you know, I know you now. I've been with you a lot. I'm ready to see someone else and learn. And so the pre-K was packed. The rooms are packed. And when I say packed, it's nice to have a full group or half a group in. It's nice to see that. Kindergarten, to watch the kids being in the classrooms was terrific. I did get to see lunches delivered yes, last week up to first and second grade. It's going well. It's going very well. I've been in the cafeteria here at the junior senior high school. That's going well. We did have some complaints about the Mitchell School and, or maybe not complaints, some parents had said, you know, we see these, we see these big trifles, these sneeze guards up. We're in COVID, and we need to respond to that. We are responding to it. You know, our teachers have asked for these types of shields. Staff asked for them. I got 50% of our parents saying, we want shields up because I want to protect my child. I get 50% saying, take the shields down. I want them to be more social. These shields, I know that John, we've seen it before here. We didn't bring one in tonight. There was blue. People thought that the blue to stay and that it was sort of shielding them. The blue was a film that is on there. We've now taken that film off. We get them on a daily basis. We're still ordering these types of PPEs. They're there. We're trying to do the best we can. We've had, and, and I want to thank the parents who continue to write to me, email me, call me and say, hey, did you think about putting desks in the cafeteria? We have. And one of the things we thought about is even if we put desks in there, those shields are going up. And the desks have to remain going the same direction. So Dr. Williams and I are going to sit next to each other like this, six feet apart, looking this way with our shield up. And when I turn to her, I still am going to have to say, hey Gina, I'm over here. And she may be talking to the student over there. So there's a little bit of the, you know, it's, we're trying. We also have, we also see the shields. We also see the shields. They're not a deterrent. We are, Mr. Gentile and I did speak about them. People go out for dinner. People go out for breakfast. There's no shields on the tables. The high school and the junior senior high school, we do not have the shields up on the table because the kids are apart from each other. That's an option. We've looked at that. We also know that putting the desks out on the floor at the middle school to clean it would be an extra, I don't know, probably two hours of custodial time, which if that's what it takes, that's what it takes. However, that was one of the reasons we went for the round tables. Tables are going to be put up, moved in and moved out very quickly. We can clean those tables quicker than we can clean desks. It just makes it much easier. And I want to thank Deb Vaughn and the staff for all of the cafeterias. They have been a tremendous asset to us. Once the lunch is over, the kids start to leave. All the ladies that work in our cafeteria come from the back. They come right out. They start wiping down the tables. So I want to thank all of them. But in transportation, we did get a couple of calls. This is not like any other year. We are ironing those issues out. We're not always going to drive into every cul-de-sac. We're not going to stop at every stop on Bridge Street. We're not going to stop at a house and then go 100 feet and stop at a house and go 100 feet and stop at a house. We're trying to be reasonable. We're trying to listen. We're trying to make reasonable stops. So if it's 400 feet between my house and Trista's house, well, Trista's kids have to walk 200 feet back and my kids have to walk 200 feet up. And Ellen just happens to be the house in between, and she'd only ask to walk 50 feet. So we're trying. We get it. John has ridden the bus, I think, three times now. The kindergartners know him. The second grade low him. Got off the bus the other day and then one of the kids says he got off. He said, come on guys. And as they walked up the hill, one of the students said, bye John. He's our new bus monitor. We did get a telephone call that the kids are sitting too close. They're not. We have X's of where the students can sit. Reminder, I cannot be on the buses at all times. So we have an X, we have an X where Dr. Williams is and she's in front of me. I should be sitting here in back of Dr. Williams. But you know what? I'm seven and I'm going to go like this and sit with Dr. Williams and say, that's kids and that's school. And we're going to take our lumps and, but we are listening and we call Lucini and we're trying to get bus monitors. We've gotten cafeteria monitors. We have extra custodians. Everything that you've asked for myself and my staff to do, we have done. We have complied. We have listened. The teachers wanted students to wear masks, mask coverings and face shields from pre-K to 12. We've, we, we have battled with the student for the last few days. It's not easy for a four year old to keep a mask on all day. They need to pull it off. Do we have mask breaks? We've been asked, has there been mask breaks at the buildings? The principals know there has to be mask breaks. They are telling the teachers, I can tell you this, they are having mask breaks. But there are times that they get into a lesson and the kids are loving it and the teacher's loving it and things are going so well that they might get past the, I don't know, 11:15 outside mask break. You see two tents out at the central school. There's a tent out back here. There's a tent in the middle veranda here at the junior senior high school. There's a tent in the middle of the veranda at the Mitchell School and there's one on the side of the building. There's plenty of space to go outside. The junior senior high school students can go out onto the track if they need and want to and walk around. Nobody's stopping anybody from going out for a mask break.
I saw some kids outside at Central School under the tents today.
Yeah.
The kids looked happy.
They're very happy. I think they're more happy just to be here. So keep, and, and I'm going to stress this again, and in my letter I sent out on Friday. You can air your differences on Facebook. We can air our concerns on the hub. If you don't send them to the superintendent of schools, L. Legault@EBPS.net, I cannot do anything about it. And ranting and raving and throwing stones is not a proactive solution to where we are today. These kids deserve more than that. Our district deserves more than that. Our parents deserve it. I'm listening. I'm addressing and we'll get through it. Dr. Williams has fielded, she can speak for herself. I understand that, but she's fielded many calls and emails this week about synchronous and asynchronous. What does it look like? Why isn't Central School doing this? Central School parents, Dr. Williams, we'll discuss this in a minute. We've talked about it. Mrs. Byrne has talked to her parents about it. We knew this was a phase in approach. Wait for us. We're getting there. It's only the fourth day of school. The second day, third day for Cohort A. Tomorrow is remote learning. Thursday will be third day for Cohort B. Friday will be their fourth day. It's still early. I know, I think, I think when we got back, Tim, you might know what it was, but I think everybody thought we were going to, you know, snap our fingers and we're going to go like that. We don't even have banana bread yet in the lunchroom. So we're not there yet. Right, Mrs. Vaughn is here tonight to talk about the lunch program and I'll let her talk. We're not there yet. We're getting there. And I just ask our parents, hold on, we'll get there and we're listening. The teachers have been great. Everybody's wearing their masks. We have a few teachers that need to wear the shields. We are talking about maybe possibly writing a 504 for the district. Those who wear glasses and are wearing the mask because the glasses are fogging up. We did have some kindergarten teachers today have the shield on because they wear glasses. We don't want to scare the children that are that young in pre-K and K. So that's been, but it's, it's been working out. People understand that. We're talking about the kids. I've talked to a few kids that their glasses have been fogging up. I've asked the students, would you like a face mat, a shield? Couple of the students said, yeah. So maybe we say we can pull it down to here, put your shield down, and then when you're in the hallways, you put your shield back, or you put your face mask back up and walk around. But when you're at your desk, I'm far enough away from somebody. Reminder, our desks are six foot away to the side, to the front and to the back. The instructional support assistants, we certainly need more of them. You saw the appointments on the F-21 sheet that I've, I've sent out. We have hired a lot of teachers. It's on your second page here. It's an Excel spreadsheet. It is, we have hired a lot of people. But we need instructional assistants. If anybody's listening this evening or out there in East Bridgewater and would like to become a cafeteria monitor, hallway monitor, bathroom monitor, please contact me at EBPS.net. If you are an instructional assistant and would like to be an instructional assistant, please contact, you can go up on School Spring and apply through that venue. We are looking for substitute teachers. We are down substitutes. This has been an issue. We hear this. We've seen this on Facebook. We have been, both Dr. Williams and I have been contacted about this. I cannot do anything about a retirement that happens out of the blue. I cannot help if we have sick time. I cannot help if we have maternity and we have posted these positions. We had teachers that were on maternity or had their children in the spring. They stayed home. They said, we think we can handle teaching in the first couple of weeks or months of the, of having the child. We allowed that. Now they're on maternity leave. They thought they were going to come back. We thought we'd be out of COVID by now. Their babies are still very young. They were concerned. It was hard for us to get subs. I will say this, the high school is working around the clock on interviews. I know that we've interviewed, or they're interviewing tomorrow for a few positions and hopefully a couple of full-time subs. The Central School is looking for full-time subs. Mitchell School is full. So we've got most of our classrooms full. I know that there's a few places that people continue to say, well, you didn't tell us this or we don't have this or what are we doing here? I'm not going to discuss personnel or underlying, any underlying issues, but people have to remember, we are in COVID. I need to respond. I handle the personnel for the district. We're doing the best that we can. We are trying to fill these positions. We're not the only school district that doesn't have teachers. I can tell you that. But we're trying, and I do know that the commissioner has told us that those, the students that were doing their student teaching in the spring, if they didn't finish, they can come out as full-time subs and potentially get in as teaching. So we're looking into that route. These are all of the teachers, teacher assistants, everyone that we have hired up until now.
Thank you.
Custodians, we are, we, it's an everyday, it's an everyday interview for John and Brian Kylie. They continue to, and Doug Hortense, I want to thank all of the custodians who've stayed in this game with us, continued to clean, continue to keep us disinfected and just keep us, kept us moving. We're getting the custodians. We're hiring as quickly as I possibly can. We've got some temporary custodians. We have grab and go lunch monitors at the Mitchell, at the Central School. I think we're full over there. She has a pretty large group delivering lunches and the bags. Deb Nichols told us a great story, or Kate Byrne told us a great story the other day. Mrs. Vaughn bought red bags. The lunches are put in these red bags. They look like the Domino's or a pizza bag. The lunches showed up to, I believe, a first grade room and one of the kids was, kids was like, we're getting pizza? This is the greatest day of my life. And so they, they looked around and he goes, I'm buying, I'm buying tomorrow if this is what happens. So thank you Debbie for doing that for us. And we have, the kids love it. Our grab and go outside, 8:15 to 10:15, 69 lunches.
8:15 to 10:15.
8:15 to 10:15. And we started with 29 lunches. We then went to 49 lunches. We're up to 70?
50, we're up to 50.
Up to 50 lunches. Those are for, those students who are not in, like Cohort B, if you want to come up. It's actually for any student from kindergarten to age 21 that is school aged and is still of our program. You could be a student in Brockton. You could come here and pick up lunch. You could be a student Whitman Hansen, West Bridgewater, Bridgewater, Rainham, pick up lunch. We have the waiver for that. But the grab and go has been great. Less, we have less choices to support our lunch program, but other than that, everything's going great. The opening of school, the strengths, our teachers, our biggest strength is our students. Their resilience, their grit, their social being is, is beyond, I can't, I'm just very proud of them. Our weaknesses is, I just went over them. We're still working every year on transportation. We're working on filling positions. But if those are weaknesses, I think that it was a great, it is a great start.
How's the technology been, Liz?
Technology, I have Andrew and Josh here this evening. They have done an outstanding job. We've got two people running around this district keeping us going. Our bandwidth is good. The, we did have a meeting on Friday with our principals. And one of the things we talked about was that, that Google, let me, I want Josh and Andrew to, to continue to do this or say no to me. Our bandwidth is good in the district. And if we need more, we will continue to up it. But right now we are good. Google, the traffic that Google meets has across the Commonwealth and in the country is more than what Google ever thought it would, would be. They are working on that issue. I did get an email from a parent in the district who is an IT person and said, jeez, but your, your mail system, there's something wrong with your Gmail accounts. They are looking into it. They did look into it. We did see an issue in a few of the areas. Andrew and Josh are working on those areas. We have put hotspots. We do have hotspots. John is buying hotspots. I think he went, where'd you go? T-Mobile today? Pick up hotspots for more students. I took a picture the other day. We had two hotspots on the floor next to Joanne Benner's desk. It was what we were running the district off of, or I said, is this what we're running the district off of right now? But John is supplying. If you need a hotspot, call the school, have your parent come pick it up. We'll get it to the principals and all you have to do is come in and we'll pick it up, or you can pick it up. TJ Smith's, our Remote Learning Center, we did have some issues down there. We are working on the issues. Comcast is down there. We have hotspots down there. We have, we're working with Comcast. We had to do one thing before the other before they come out. Am I accurate in that, Josh? Before they come out, we have to do everything that they ask us to. John, yes?
Yep.
TJ Smith's. The Remote Learning Center at Mitchell School.
They're tied into?
There were a few issues, but right now.
They just weren't as Central School students. They weren't on the board of Mitchell's wifi. So we just had to get them access to the board of Mitchell's student wifi.
We had some people call us and say, I, I don't want to, I'm going to use the word that was used to me. I wouldn't use this. But we're getting a crappy Chromebook. We want a nice Chromebook. We're doing the best that we can. We have Chromebooks that have been used. We give those out first. And now as the new ones come in, if they go down, we will give you a new Chromebook. But we're trying the best that we can to make sure that students are outfitted with the proper technology, proper Chromebooks. All of our teachers have laptops. They're working well. The lunch program, Deb, everyone's free. Grab and go is free. We want everybody to eat. Breakfast at Central School, breakfast at Mitchell School, breakfast at the junior senior high school.
And grab and go too.
And grab and goes, breakfast and lunch daily. Special education, the meetings are going on as the best that we can with the IP meetings. They started setting them up all summer long. Now parents are starting to come in or they're doing the Zoom or Google Meet meetings with parents online. Your IP coordinator will, will contact you. If you have an issue with that, please call Jay Fallon here at the central office. He'll get ahold of the principal. Transportational, the principals, I know that we had principals update. They felt that this was a little too early for them and honestly, it has been a, and I think Tim can attest for this, it is fast and furious for the principals. They do a lot of work. They've been doing a lot of work from, you know, they're, they're here at 6 o'clock in the morning. They, they didn't leave till 6 tonight. Barbara and I were, when we do the agenda, we usually call out and say, hey, just reminder you're coming. And I was busy out in the buildings the last couple of days, just very busy with some issues and going in and out of the building. So I apologize. They want to be here, but they want to come in and have a full. But I did ask Dr. Williams if she could just go through very quickly or take as much time as you would like to, because I've done that. But she'd go quicker than me. If you could, just to talk, Gina works with the principals. Dr. Williams also has been in meetings with the facilitators and talking about curriculum instruction. And I know that people are asking about Central School and the, when are we going to see the teachers? And Dr. Williams is working on that.
Before you get into that, I just have two questions.
Sure.
Hydration stations at the high school, I know we were working on that. Is there an update specific to those?
Yes. Well, a little bit. We are working on them. We're trying to buy them. Brian Kylie had a death in his family, so, so he's been out, but we'll have him, he was here today. So I'll be speaking with him probably tomorrow because tomorrow's the remote date. It's a little bit easier for us to move around a little bit. So I'll find out where they are. And we do have bottled water. If, if, if we find out that a student can, can't buy a water, doesn't have any water, we have water available in the building. Okay?
Those stations are we looking to add?
We'd probably add one on each floor here. We cannot turn by law, you can't turn the water off in a building and they, the water must run through like the fountains because it goes, you know, it's off the bathrooms or whatever. But we don't shut it down. We just shut the
Oval.
The nozzle down. So it's not the water we shut down. It's the nozzle. But yes.
Thank you. And my second question, and this is specific to the high school because I'm, I'm sure it looks different up here for mask breaks. And I know it's just the first few days of school, so everyone's trying to find a routine. But I have heard from several people that there really haven't been any mask breaks, which I think with older kids, it's a little easier for them to kind of do a quick little take a breath or what have you. But what is that generally going to look like at the high school?
Well, they have the Viking block and the Viking block was really the initial spot where they were going to let kids go out. Today at about 8:30, I was on my way over towards the Central School and I saw the band come outside, the music, and the kids were pulling their masks down as they were walking out to play their instruments. Mr. Sylvia knows. They mentioned it. He'll, they're going to mention it again because it did come up several times and one, and one time today. So we did speak about it as a group with the administrators. I think, again, I think people get into it and they get the rhythm going and they're like, jeez, this is going so well. I don't want to stop. And right now, we don't have any cases of COVID for students. Knock on wood. So we're doing very well. And the kids have been terrific with it. They, they figured it out and they know how to do it. But yes, they should be able to go outside. They sit at a desk six feet apart. I, I have to tell you, I, I don't have a problem with the student pulling their mask down when you're six feet apart. I understand, and especially if we've got the sneeze guard up. I really don't have a problem with a student taking a mask break and sitting inside or sitting in that. I know some of our teachers do. I know that our policy is saying we need to wear a mask at all time. But we go out for, go out for dinner and you take your mask off. While we're in our offices, we have our masks off. If you're behind that sneeze guard, they should be able to take their masks down for a few minutes in their mask break. I will mention that. Pretty much, John, I think that everyone has those sneeze guards up right now. I don't, I can't even imagine how many we don't have.
The state guidelines are really clear that mask breaks are permitted.
Yes.
I think as long as kids aren't intermingling with each other while they're doing it. They're stationary. They're protected from each other. It's hard to argue with that.
You know, Tim, we had a parent call today and I, and I appreciate these calls and I'm not making fun. I had a parent call and say, I just went by outdoors and kids are running around and they were playing and they didn't have their masks on and they were laughing. and they didn't have their masks on, and they were laughing and throwing a ball around. Go outside tonight, and there's kids out, out in here. Go drive down the street, and there's the bike gang, John's Bike Gang, and his boys, yeah, they always do wheelies. And he always has to yell out there, and he knows every one of them. We call them John's Bike Gang. They're all driving their bikes around, no masks, no nothing, high-fiving each other, doing wheelies. They've been out all summer. So we got to work together on this. We'll get through this, and, but yeah, we'll bring it up again.
But I do also want to say thank you to the teachers. I know there's been a lot of concern and angst for everyone getting back into the classroom, but I've heard, I, I think that once everyone started to settle in their routine, there's a little bit more of, little flexibility, still following the guidelines, making sure everything's being followed. But it's not so rigid, and I think that's helping the kids transition into school and find some resiliency. When you hear, you know, oh, I was actually able, you know, and this is the high school level, because I know it's different at, you know, the elementary schools, but I was actually able, you know, to have my snack and, you know, in, in class, and it's all within the guidelines and protocols. But I think the teachers should be commended, because as they're navigating the unknowns, they're finding flexibility that's then making the kids more comfortable while still keeping them safe.
I think, yeah, they're doing a great job. I mean, I mean, the stories that, you know, we can tell, you know, Dr. Williams and I saw, we were on the hallway, there was a ninth grader, and the second day of school was lost. Didn't really know where one of his classes was. Before, we would see these ninth graders like run right to guidance or run to an adult. He, he was looking at his phone. He had out his schedule. And I, Mr. Sylvia and I happened to be out there. I think Gina was out there, and I said, what, what's going on? He goes, all of my other classes have a room number. This is the only one. And he looked at me, he said, but it's health and wellness. So I'm going to go into the gym. There's got to be a gym teacher that's teaching health and wellness, so they probably know where the, the room is. So maybe COVID is bad, COVID is bad, and it's a terrible thing, but it has taught these kids to do some things on their own that they might not have done before. So I don't know if that's good or bad, but I'm seeing it.
I can honestly tell you, I mean, we all know that kids are adaptable, probably more than adults are. And I, I can tell you, last Wednesday, in my own school, on the first day, walking in the first period, walked around and said, this is, this is weird. This is odd. It feels uncomfortable. And, but yet, over the last five days, we've watched the kids adapt to where they can interact with each other appropriately, where they can participate in class appropriately. They're happy to be there. They're smiling. They're, they're making it work for themselves.
Yeah.
And I'm sure the kids here in East are the same way. It's what kids do, you know, so.
In every classroom, we, we had posters made up. Every classroom says the same thing. We are pre-K through twelve saying the same thing. Each student is going to receive one of these tomorrow, put on their backpacks, or hold on to their keys. It's just a reminder, practicing social distance. Stay six feet. Wash your hands. Wear your mask and social distance. These, as, as silly as it may seem, you put it in, you put it on your backpack, or you keep it. And I put on mine on my keys. I think it's important. You know, I, I don't think kids should put everything on there.
No.
But we, we're taking this seriously. I don't know what more we can do to express that. Dr. Williams, sorry.
No, I think, you know, a lot of what's been said already, you know, every school year doesn't start off instantaneously, you know, everybody settling in. So on top of what typically comes with the new school year, we have all the added pieces of adjusting to new physical environments, adjusting to new protocols. You know, I, I heard from parents that they expected the opening to go differently, because they were working remotely in the spring, and they expected a better plan first day. And I needed to remind them, it's a new year. You know, we left in March. Students had six months of that grade level with that teacher, being familiar with classmates and expectations. And, and we're starting a brand-new year. I mean, especially at the Central School, where open house is such a vital part of, of starting a school year. And students, you know, not knowing the adult who is their teacher or classmates. So, you know, on top of newness of any type of year, we have this added piece of teachers trying to work within the constraints of, you know, the protocols that we need to abide by to keep everybody safe. So, you know, we met with the principals on Friday after two days, and they saw a big difference just from Thursday to Friday in the comfort level. And, you know, I think Mrs. Higgins, to your point, you know, just being able to relax a little bit and realize that, you know, flexibility can be put into the plans. And I know I've heard from my own boys, I mean, everybody's coming at it from a different comfort level. And we need to give people the space and time that they need to take the risk and take the chances. And, you know, some teachers are, are getting there faster than others, where they feel comfortable telling students, you can take the mask down. Step into the hallway if you need to. At the junior, senior, you know, I think last week with them having all eight blocks, I think there was a lot more transitioning going on, so I don't think the mask rates were at the forefront. Whereas now that we get into the schedule and the students have the long blocks, I think they'll be more mindful of those breaks that are needed. You know, at the Central School level, you know, and I will speak fondly of it as my former home, you know, the, the teachers are perfectionists. They want everything to, to go well. They are planners. They take full responsibility for everything that goes on every second of the day in their rooms. And we have to be aware that, you know, when they have students who are remote, or they have students who are not in front of them every single day, there's that sense of a loss of, of control and that feeling that they're vulnerable. And they just want to do a great job for every student all the time. And I think the biggest conversation we've had with them is, we're going to make mistakes, but we have to, you know, we have to make those initiations to get more comfortable with what we're doing. We need to think in a remote-minded frame, knowing that we've got students who won't have the, the luxuries of being in front of their teachers, even just two days a week. And we owe it to them to give them and provide them with the same level of, of instruction that we have with our students who are in front of us. So I just, you know, I ask that people be patient. I ask that people, you know, make direct connections with their child's teacher, initiate it from that point. Because if frustrations get too far gone, then, then people have a hard time, you know, being able to listen and sympathize with where people are at. So I, I think, you know, as soon as frustrations begin, people need to initiate those conversations and those contacts with the teacher, and not let it get to a level of frustration where they need to, you know, reach out to superintendent's office. I mean, certainly, we will be helping with those phone calls and those emails, but, you know, we go directly back to the building level to make sure that they have the supports that they need. We've got brand-new teachers like we do every year, and, you know, I think the list is even longer this year than it is on a typical year. And, you know, we do have a memorandum, and the teachers are well-aware of that memorandum, and we know that we have obligations to fulfill, and the teachers are well-aware of that. And we are working to get them to that level that they can deliver the instruction that they feel confident in delivering to students and giving access to all families. So like I said, from Fri-, just Thursday to Friday, the principals felt like things were settling in. And I know as each day goes by, that settling in is, is going to, you know, be more profound. So I think, you know, the, the biggest thing, the message that we can get out there to families and parents is, you know, you need to let us know. Let us know if there's struggles going on at home. Let us know if there's frustration that's building, because we can only help you if you let us know.
Gina, quick question. Where did we land with percent remote roughly? Do you know?
I think we ended up with about two hundred and twenty students out of about twenty-three hundred. So the breakdown was eighty, yeah, eighty, eighty students at the junior, senior high school, sixty, I believe, at the Mitchell School, and about fifty at Central School. So still relatively low.
Very well. Much lower than I thought.
And.
Very close to the twenty percent.
I think as of Friday, we had six fully remote students returned to a hybrid. So.
And we got them in?
Yes.
Great job. That's what, two days?
I just want, any more questions for Gina on instruction?
No.
I just wanted to touch base. John did have a meeting on, with Brian Noble the other day on the COVID money, our, the money that we get from Plymouth County and where we're at. And I just wanted him to just give a quick update. I know that he's going to give a bigger update on the second, the next meeting, but just a quick one.
So we're still in pretty good shape with the COVID money. I think there's about over four hundred thousand left. We will be looking at probably purchasing some more Chromebooks. I mean, our first order of a hundred and sixty came in. We probably distributed about a hundred and twenty. We ordered another hundred. That hasn't come in yet, but.
If you ordered today, when would you get them?
Probably a couple of months.
I was going to say, Christmas, maybe?
Yeah.
Does Walmart have them?
I'd say a couple of months, right, right, guys?
Yeah.
So, I mean, the ones we got, a couple of weeks ago, we ordered in June. So we'll be looking at, at ordering probably a significant amount of more Chromebooks. PPE, PPE, we'll, we'll continue to purchase. I mean, we go through probably a pallet every two weeks of wipes.
Wow.
But we're, we're keeping up with that, and there's a, there's a good, steady supply out there of.
I was going to say, how's the supply, John?
Yeah, so the supply's good out there. We work, we work with some good vendors that are, that work with us very well. Other than that, I, I think Chromebooks are the big thing. I mean, we, we've been great so far. The guys have been turning them out. I don't, I don't think any kid has gone a day, a day without one. Unless, of course, we don't know. If we, if we know.
You can fix what you don't know.
So just out of curiosity, I, I know that we talked last year about high school students bringing Chromebooks into school and that, you know, we, we weren't big fans of that for a couple of different reasons. Is that, do we still feel that way as a district about kids at the Mitchell or the high school bringing in their own devices if they're working or they're familiar with?
I don't think we have a problem with that. Do we, guys? No?
Okay.
I think it was more around like the testing, right?
Right. Testing, well, testing, they'll, they'll need to use our Chromebooks, so. Normal everyday use, that's fine.
Deb Vaughn is here. I just, Deb, were you having any, I know that you had problems at the beginning with Thurston. I mean, not problem, but they were waiting for us to get in to order food, and we all sat.
Yeah, so we're having today, all the tenants, we're on schedule. Just to, you know, we need a, we need a, we need a cancel, because right now, everything basically just came in today, so we're on schedule. Everybody's got one crack.
When, when a student brings in their own Chromebook or computer laptop, whatever, can you still monitor if they're going to other websites?
Yes. Right. It's through the ser-, it's through the server, not through the server, through a product we have called GoGuardian.
And Mrs. Vaughn, I can't see you, but I'm sure you may have seen or heard, but you have been a hero mentioned on Facebook several times. So thank you for all that you do, and I hope you realize that the parents really, really, really appreciate you.
Thank you. I'm not a Facebook person, but I'm a member of my staff, because I couldn't do any of it without them, but thank you.
Just one more congratulations and thank you. Not that no one does not deserve it for getting through the last six months that we all have, but to the technology folks, I have a lot of people near and dear to me who work in technology in schools, so I can imagine what the last couple of weeks have been like. So, so much of what we've done has been hinging on all of your hard work, so thank you guys so much for that. And again, just kind of to echo what Trista had said, I've heard of a lot of folks who, from folks, rather, who were super anxious, like everyone, getting up to this, and I think it just, these last couple of days, it's really hit people how hard it was to get to this point. So I'm hoping that once we get over this kind of hump of the first week, you hear a lot more congratulations and support. And I think that it's going to come through once we get into a schedule. But, you know, just to echo what you'd said, Trista, thank you guys for everything, so.
Thank you. I mean, we have the phases that we're going through, and with the MOU, we know the dates and our phases. And you might have saw on the news tonight, the commissioner has asked, and the Commonwealth has asked, are we ready to go back? And how do we go back? And what are your metrics for that? We do have our metrics set up. We're, we're watching them. We're actually doing very well in East Bridgewater, but it's going to come down to us and you if, when, when and if we're ready to come back. I, you know, I did speak to, you know, other, a couple of other superintendents. There's some people, they, they're, want us to go back. They, we have parents that want us to go back, but we got to take our time, and we, you know, as, as, as good as it feels today, it could all, you know, go south one day or go, you know, in a different direction. So we're watching our metrics, and we're going to continue to send them to DESI. We talk to DESI on a daily basis. Karen Clifford is doing a terrific job. She is on top of this. She's changing the fact sheets every day. She, she responds to DESI every day, and she works with Sue Malloy. And Sue Malloy's been a tremendous liaison between the town, the Commonwealth, and with us. So, you know, the town, the DPW, everybody, Brian Noble, the police chief, letting all of the police were out and have been out every day with these buses. We have a little backup right now up on Central Street that always happens. The first week of kindergarten and pre-K, everybody, actually kindergarten, the parents don't want to let them out of the car. The child doesn't want to get out of the car. We don't, we don't let the parent out of the car. If you remember, if, when you had your, some parents tried to get out or sneak around the car. We've got people out there saying, stay in the car. You know, we're not being mean. It's just, it's the only way we're going to get that child to move and to get them in. So that'll alleviate too. Reminder, when you come out of Central School, and I promised the chief I would say this, you can't take a left. Take a right, go back around. Sorry, but you're going to block traffic. It's going to slow it up. Come out and take a right. They are going to put a police officer again at the end of the driveway for a couple of days to try to keep us moving. So that was my. And we had, we had fire drills, and the fire drills are starting. We had one today at the high school. John?
I think you should be out at the end of the driveway.
I had some kids.
I would like to see that.
I've been there.
You know, well, they, they do separate, separate fire drills for like cohort A versus cohort B.
Yeah. There'll be every, I believe every day, they're going to start doing them, just because there's so many.
Right. It's like double the amount that you don't have to do.
If you have separately scheduled groups.
I think, I think Dr. Williams' kids were home today, and they did the fire drill at home.
I don't know about that.
Maybe to the kitchen.
I just would like everybody to know that Dr. Williams and I were meeting in my office, and the door was shut. And the fire alarm was going off, and we were talking back and forth, and Dr. Williams said, is that the fire alarm? And lo and behold, it was, and we looked out, and there goes John Shea walking across the parking lot. Thank you. Thank you. There's, there's three of us in a line in that office.
Leave no man behind, John.
This is what, okay, okay.
He abandoned his team.
Yeah.
So we're going to call him George Costanza.
Yeah, he, he'd get outside, and he's like, well, I didn't know what he was going to do.
I'm glad the building wasn't burning down.
Yeah, so were we.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any other questions?
Just congratulations.
Yeah, really.
That's a bustin' hump and getting it done.
Yep, for sure.
They all have. Thank you.
Everybody. I mean, there isn't a person.
I'm sure you're all exhausted, but the work shows. And so thank you on behalf of our kids. It's been great.
And Liz, just think, you won't have to call a snow day this year. You can call a remote day. Look at the bright side.
I already got, I think I got COVID hair. Last year, I had little gray hair. I only had a little bit. This year, I got more, so, yeah.
Wear it well.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, I don't want to call it a snow day. I don't think I have to.
You don't have to. You get a remote day if you need it.
All right. Moving on, reports and discussion. So you have in front of you, school committee operating protocols. If I had a chance to review those, are any questions or any discussion anyone would like to have about those protocols? They are unchanged from the previous year.
They look good.
Okay. So we'll vote on, actually, we could probably act on that now. Would anyone like to make a motion to accept the operating protocols for the 2020, 2021 school year?
So moved.
Moved by Teresa.
Second.
Second by Trista. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Moving on to action items. Action is required after review to approve accounts payable warrants, thirteen SV dated nine twenty-three twenty. I would take a motion to accept the payroll warrant.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa. Second by Amanda. All in favor?
Aye.
So, moving on to. So, moving on to voting delegate for the annual MASC, MASs conference. So, before we have a motion, are there any volunteers to be the school committee voting delegate for this year's conference? Mrs. Pennington? Any others? So, I would take a motion to accept Mrs. Pennington, to appoint her as the school committee voting delegate to the annual conference of the MASC, MASs.
So moved.
Moved by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Trista, all in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Thank you.
And Dr. Williams, you have information from us about homeschool applications?
I have the list of names for homeschooling plans to be approved. I have reviewed all plans to ensure that they meet all the requirements, and per my recommendation to the superintendent, I recommend that they be approved for the 2020-2021 school year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Teresa?
Second.
Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Before you end the meeting?
Yes.
I was afraid you were just about to make a motion and.
Go right ahead.
I have one question. So, this was a while back, I don't know when, I think it was the superintendent who said something about looking into getting air purifiers, so I was wondering if anything ever transpired with that.
We looked at them, and we still will continue to look at them if it becomes an issue. Nothing has, I think because of our air quality was okay and our ventilation was okay, they're approximately $700 apiece. And to equip all of our rooms, it'd be a substantial amount, and right now, we have good ventilation and good air movement, knock on wood, that it's not 92 degrees out and stifling the buildings at the elementary school. We've had, left our windows open on the weekends. I'm publicizing that, but I don't think anybody's going to go in and.
The city needs a box of crayons.
Right, but we've been leaving the windows open, so it's been clearing that out. And so, no, we haven't, we're not pursuing, we, we have spoken about it.
We have, we have purchased some, five, and those are for areas that are, do not have windows. So, we do have.
Am I correct, I thought I read somewhere in a school safety report that buying air purifiers for the size of the classrooms is really not practical, like they don't really work? Is that accurate?
Everything I've read, that they don't do what people
Right.
think they do. It's more ventilation.
They're good for smaller office spaces or bedrooms, but not really for large classrooms.
That's what we're focused on, we have purchased five, so five.
Gotcha. Thank you. Alan, any other questions?
No, thank you.
All right. I would take a motion to close the meeting?
So moved.
Moved by Teresa? Second by Amanda. Second by Amanda, all in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone.